Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the public hearing. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Your Honor, the mayor.
Here.
Counselor Enright.
Here.
Counselor Myers.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Barlow.
Here.
Counselor Van Buren.
Here.
Counselor Kaplow.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's public hearing is regarding the City of Oswego Housing Choice Voucher Program, five-year plan 2015 to 2019. Ms. Vanouse, would you state your name, your address, and tell us what's on your mind?
I'm Mary Mound, in Development Ranch, City of Oswego. The City of Oswego has administered a Section 8 housing choice voucher program since 1976, and this program helps 402 households currently. We have authority to fund 489 voucher units in the City of Oswego. But due to deprecation, we have had to modify our budget this year, and so we have only filled 402. However, with that, 241 members of this community receive assistance every month through the voucher program. The mission of the city of Oswego, the Assistance Program, or Housing Choice Program, is to promote access and affordable housing, economic opportunity, and the suitable living environment free from discrimination in our community. This program brings over $2.5 million to our economy here and provides good quality housing that is inspected every year to meet housing quality standards as defined by HUD. The five-year action plan will continue this program for the next five years. And as far as our goals and objectives, our goals are to expand the supply of available affordable housing units, to maximize the use of program funds to assist as many families as feasible based on budget authority, to improve specific management functions, improve the quality of assisted housing, promote participants' self-sufficiency and asset development, particularly through the family self-sufficiency program. We've had 15 families graduate from the rental assistance program. That means that their income was raised to such a point that they no longer were eligible for the program, and in many cases, they were able to afford a home or to assist with other family needs once they graduated from the family self-sufficiency program. Another goal is to increase assisted housing choices and to ensure equal opportunity and affirmatively further fair housing in our community. The Department of Housing and Urban Development only provides funding for programs that assist low, moderate income throughout the country. So, we have a very high-performing agency. Our average over the last 10 years has been at 102 percent. So, I would recommend that we continue to fund this program over the next five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vanouse. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the assembly? Mr. Becker.
My name's Miles Becker. I live in the Third Ward. The only thing I can comment on that is, who's going to pay the taxes?
Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment? Seeing none, could I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Kaplowitz, Counselor Van Buren, please call the roll.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
The public hearing is adjourned. We will now begin the public session. As of 7:15, no one has signed up to speak in the public session. Is there anyone here who would like to make any comments? Seeing none, we will adjourn this until the regular meeting starts until 7:30. Thank you. Would everyone please be seated? I'd like to begin this meeting. Can please rise in the Pledge of Allegiance? The clerk, please call the roll.
Your Honor, the mayor.
Here.
Counselor Enright.
Here.
Counselor Myers.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Barlow.
Here.
Counselor Van Buren.
Here.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you. Under the mayor's report, it's that time of the year that NICOM, the New York Conference of Mayors, recognizes public service for city employees with 25 or more years of service. And this year, we've got quite a few from our fire department, DPW, police department, traffic department, water, and wastewater. I know some of those people are in attendance this evening, and so what I'm going to do is I'm going to call all the names of the people, and those that are here can come up and get their certificate. Ms...oh, they're here. Will be with us to celebrate this. So, from the fire department, we have Donald Dowd II, 25 years of service; James McCleary, 35 years of service; the Department of Public Works, David Fields, 25 years; Bartley Ford, 35 years; Guard Nirbin, 30 years; Anthony Spataro, 35 years; William Dexter Jr., 35 years; and Matthew McLean, 25 years. From the Police Department Traffic, we have Lionel Earl, 35 years; Richard Nelson, 40 years; from the Water Department, Thomas Clark, 35 years; and Thomas Delaney, 25 years; and from wastewater, Michael Byrne, 25 years; David Gills, 30 years; and Douglas Satman, 30 years. So, for those that are here, let's give them a round of applause. All right. I do have a proclamation as well. This is regarding Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which is the month of October 2014. Is there anyone here? I thought so. Okay. I'm going to read this proclamation, and you can come up. I'll hand it to you, and we can have a photograph taken. All right. "The Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2014, whereas domestic violence is widespread and devastating to society as a whole, but particularly women and children; and whereas one in four women will experience domestic violence during her lifetime; and whereas more than three women a day are murdered by their current or former husband or boyfriend; and whereas more than 15 million children are exposed to domestic violence and battering every year; and whereas domestic violence costs $8.3 billion in annual expenses as a result of higher medical costs and lost productivity; and whereas SAF, Oswego County's Domestic Violence and Rape Crisis Center, served more than 750 clients last year. However, crimes of domestic and sexual violence continue to be vastly under-reported; and whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group of people but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers; and whereas violence against women and children is a prevalent social ill due to the historical imbalance of power, gender, and an age." Now therefore, I, Thomas W. Gillen, Mayor of the City of Oswego, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to observe this month by working as individuals and as a community to support victims and survivors in their healing and finding safety and promoting accountability among batterers and abusers. We must stand up and say no more to domestic violence." So, I will present this to you, ladies. All right. Now, any of the counselors have any reports, any comments, observations? Seeing none, the clerk, please call Resolution 425.
Resolution 425 would approve the minutes of the committee council meeting held September 22nd, 2014.
Counselor Enright, Counselor Van Buren, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 426.
Resolution 426.
Counselor Walker and Counselor Myers, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 427.
Resolution 427.
Counselor Enright, Counselor Todd, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 428.
Resolution 428 would accept a donation of a park bench.
Counselor Barlow and Counselor Enright, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Yes.
Please call Resolution 429.
Resolution 429 would accept a donation of a park bench to be placed at Ryback Park in memory of Teresa Reedy.
Counselor Myers, Counselor Van Buren, any discussion? Yes, Counselor Enright.
Yeah, I just want to mention that these new park benches they're putting in are absolutely gorgeous, and they're dressing up the parks, and I'll save my comment to the last donation here, but also the flower beds that came up are looking beautiful, so I'd just say keep up the good work.
Well said. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 430.
Resolution 430 would accept a donation of a new park sign, flower beds, and the location to be placed in Kingsford Park.
Counselor Barlow, Counselor Kaplowitz, any discussion? Counselor Barlow.
Just want to thank the ORA for giving Kingsford Park some attention. It's going to really, really upgrade the park and be a nice improvement.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 431.
Resolution 431 would approve the City of Oswego Housing Choice Voucher Program, five-year plan 2015 to 2019.
Counselor Kaplowitz, second? Counselor Van Buren, any discussion? No comments? Yes, Counselor Todd.
Curious. We just got this mentioning that this 452 families. Now, we had a committee meeting last week, and the council mentioned we wanted to go down to 250 houses for the case. No place in this action plan from 2015 to 2019 does it mention reaching that goal. So, I don't know how I can support doing this if it's not getting to the goal that the council dictated to people that work for the houses.
Any other comments from the council? Counselor Kaplowitz.
I have a question, and maybe Ms. Vanouse can answer it. Can a plan that's been approved be modified over the course of the five years?
Counselor Van Buren.
I was actually going to kind of answer that with my proposition to Counselor Todd. I remember him making these comments, and I believe Ms. Vanouse said specifically that it had to be done by council resolution. Since the meeting that Counselor Todd brought this up at was after we had already scheduled the public hearing, so this can't be amended because we have to vote on this as it is because we just held the public hearing. I would suggest, if this is the direction that the council would like to go in, that we would vote no on this and authorize a new public hearing with the proposals that Mrs. Vanouse is now made aware of involved in those. If that's the direction that we're looking to move into, then that's what needs to be done. So, we could either table or vote no on this and request that a new one be brought up. So, it's...I leave it in your hands.
Yeah, the counselors went away and ends? It's Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes, your honor, and the question still is, can, if you vote on a five-year plan now, can that five-year plan be amended over time? Or does it...or is this the plan that will be in place for the next five years?
No, I don't... No, no, no.
No, he didn't.
Yeah, I mean, you could probably pass it and amend it, but I'd have to defer to Mrs. Vanouse to see if that's going to affect the funding or anything like that. I believe if she got this through a grant, that's probably based on what she wrote into the grant. I don't know how that's going to affect it. I think, you know, the probably best way was to reschedule a public hearing and everything to get it redone to the direction that you want to. Funds can always be returned.
Yeah, okay. So, if I understand you correctly, we're suggesting another public hearing of this?
If...it's not suggesting we have to. Call the question and vote on it and restart the process again.
All right. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
No.
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 Counselor Myers.
No.
No.
Counselor Walker.
No.
No.
Please call Resolution 432.
Resolution 432 would authorize a public hearing regarding the draft Climate Action Plan.
Counselor Todd.
I just got this Climate Action Plan that we requested last week. I still haven't had a chance to read it. I'd like a chance to read it, so I'd like to table it until I've got...
We've got to introduce the first counselor.
Yeah, you got to...
Introduce it.
Counselor Todd can be the first motion. I'll be the second.
I'm sorry?
I'll be the first motion.
Okay.
Proceed.
All right. So, yeah, for the discussion phase, I would like to state that during the committee when this was brought forward to schedule this public hearing, Mrs. Vanouse was asked to provide the council in its entirety the Climate Action Plan, the email or some other way, so that the entire council could go over it, and that was not done. So, I won't be supporting this until everyone has had a chance to do that.
Well, I think that's sound judgment. Tough to vote on something we haven't had the chance to read. Certainly don't question the value of the Climate Action Plan. I mean, I support it, but...
I certainly understand the value, but again, you know, this seems to be the communication issue that we're having. We continually ask for better communication, and the state just told us that we need better oversight of that office, and again, we're ignored. So, it seems to be a running theme with that office.
Okay. So, that was a motion to table?
We have to do it, and I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
I made the motion. He's seconded it for the vote, and I'll make a motion to table.
Okay.
No, no, no. I was just...I was discussing because I wanted to talk because once he makes the motion, you can't discuss anymore. So, I wanted to discuss before Todd made his motion to table. So, now, anybody else want to discuss before Todd makes his motion, do it now, and if we're ready, Counselor Todd.
Yes, Counselor Van...
I agree with Counselor Van Buren. I just got this tonight. I just want to have a chance to look it over. Do you know what I'm voting on? That's all. So, I agree with you. I think, you know, the history of this program is a good thing. I just want to look over how this in perspective to the city applies, so...
I agree.
I support the table.
Yes, Counselor...
Second to table.
All right. So, the vote is to table.
To table.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes, to table.
Yes. Yes, to table.
Yes, to table. Yes, to table.
Yes.
Yes, to table.
Let's call Resolution 433.
Resolution 433 would authorize a public hearing regarding Local Law Number Three of the year 2014, a local law ending Chapter 108 Electrical Standards of the Code of the City of Oswego, New York.
Counselor Van Buren, second Counselor Kaplowitz. Is there any discussion? Yes, Counselor Todd.
We've gotten a lot of feedback on this, and Counselor Van Buren and I sat in on a meeting on it, which we had a lot of questions about. Again, this proposed change isn't something that we came up with. This is something the state is mandating on us. We can choose not to pass it, but a couple of things could happen. A, we don't pass it, and these inspections aren't done, and it's pretty much unenforceable unless you get a search warrant. Nobody can come in and inspect it. However, that being said is that if you do electrical work on your house, and you have a fire, or you have some kind of problem, and your insurance agency now comes in and does an inspection and realizes that there are electrical modifications done, and you didn't have an inspection done, they can choose not to pay you. You take that a step further, if you have a business or a rental, and you do inspection or you do electrical changes, and you don't do an inspection on it, and somebody is hurt in a fire in your house, you could face criminal charges. Again, this is another problem with the state passing mandates on to us. The state passed this on to us and said, "You guys must institute this." We don't really have a choice if the state says it's got to be in there. There's really no way to enforce it. I mean, again, it's like rental inspections. Unless you have a court order, you can't go in and see it. However, if you don't do it, the insurance company comes in and does it after you've had an issue with a fire or something, then that's the time you're going to probably have problems. And I think this is kind of a silly law. There's a ton of people in there that...in the city that can do their own electrical work, and now tell them that they've got a mandate that they've got to have somebody come in and do an inspection on it? Every time we turn on the TV, we're here about how we're trying to make New York State job-friendly. This doesn't make New York State job-friendly. However, the state mandated upon us, and we don't have any choice on doing it. If we don't put it in, we face liability if we don't have it. I think it's pretty pointless, but I don't see how we got any other way around it to pass it.
Counselor Van Buren.
I agree with a lot of the points Counselor Todd made. Just to expand a little bit on some of it, I think this is a good first step into getting up to snuff with our electrical codes. This gives us some discretion while still putting in some of the state laws. We don't want to get into a situation where we're requiring stamped electrical plans for every single job, but we would like to have the discretion that when those things do come up, if there's some major commercial work being done, those are the type of things that we require to stay in compliance with the state. You know, I think this is still friendly to homeowners and landlords. They can still do their own work. I think having a master electrician do an inspection isn't anything that's going to harm anyone. I understand that it does cost a little bit of money, but I think for the safety factor and what it does for our insurance and those type of things, it needs to be done. I think that by passing this, we're taking good stuff forward to getting up to where we need to be with electrical codes. We don't want to go in full steam and put in things that people just can't handle, but I think baby steps at this point to get us back to where we need to be with our codes is important. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Yes, Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yeah, I've received some texts and emails. I'm sure everyone else has too on this issue, and it certainly brings up some...Counselor Todd articulated about the being business-friendly, and it really puts a burden on some of our businesses, but certainly Counselor Van Buren also articulates very well the fact that this is a...there's a liability issue here when the state compels the city to make changes, and we don't. We set ourselves up for potential liability as well. So, what we're looking to do here tonight is actually authorize a public hearing so we can have a discussion of, you know, two-week dialogue on this, and hopefully at that time hear from some residents and other businesses about the impact, and also have a chance to get some questions answered ourselves that I still have in my mind that we don't...I want to see clearly where the state code does impose this on us, and I also want to understand more fully what some of the costs are that are going to be. You know, what will a master electrician, for example, charge to take a look at an entire building and whatever's been done? I think we need to look carefully what those costs are and how they're going to impose upon those that are operating businesses. And I certainly hope that as residents, we don't...if I want to change my own electrical outlet or a light switch, you know, I still want to make sure that I still have that right to do that without calling somebody in to make sure that I hook the two wires up the right way. So, anyways, I'll support the public hearing, but I really hope that we have a lot more dialogue in this one.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Enright.
Yeah, I just want to...I agree with Counselor Kaplowitz and Van Buren about this, and I believe we're all heading down the path of consistency in city government, and this goes right along the way with this. And, you know, I agree that we look at exactly what restrictions this will go impose on a homeowner, but from what I read, it looks like the homeowner will be able to change a light switch or a light fixture without having things inspected. Yet, it's going to protect the people, and, you know, the kids that come into apartments, and the public would feel safe. They know that if there have been changes, it's been done to code, it's been inspected, and you're not going to find extension cords running around and fire hazards, and this is all we're looking to do, and I think this goes a long way towards that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Please call Resolution 434.
Resolution 434 would authorize the mayor to sign Change Order Number Three with W.D. Malone Trucking and Excavating Incorporated for project modifications to provide sewer rehabilitation first.
Counselor Myers, Counselor Barlow, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
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 Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Yes.
Please call Resolution 435.
Resolution 435 would authorize the mayor to enter into a renewal agreement with underwater specialties incorporated for maintenance services at the water intake structure and tunnel.
Counselor Kaplowitz, Counselor Todd, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Please call Resolution 436. Counselor Kaplowitz, Counselor Myers, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 437.
Resolution 437 would authorize mayor to enter into a renewal agreement with underwater specialties incorporated for maintenance services of the water intake structure and tunnel.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Myers. Is there any discussion? Counselor Van Buren.
I just want to say thank you to the chief for thinking creatively and opening this up to other municipalities in the area to offset the cost. I think it's a great idea, and it helps the surrounding areas as well as us. They have code technicians brought up to speed or certified so that it doesn't cost as much to send people to training. So, I want to say thank you for that.
Any other comments? I'd like to second that, too. I think Chief McCroby's done a remarkable job of looking for options and how to get more done with less, and I applaud him for that. So, if there's no other comments, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 438. Counselor Barlow and Counselor Enright. Discussion? Counselor Enright.
Yeah, I want to thank the counselors and the public, actually. I received several phone calls and messages on my phone machines and emails in support of this in the city. And like I've made comments before, I think this has been a long time coming. And again, it goes in consistency with our policy and transparency. So, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments? Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes, Your Honor, it was very apparent over the last couple of weeks that, you know, we've had this policy together for some time now. It's actually been, I think, around four years that we implemented the policy for how we were going to sell property. In fact, at that point, we also developed a contract, and we now have it with another real estate agent. We've actually shopped that around a little bit to get the best price we could for the way we dispose of property. The one thing that we didn't think about when we put this thing together, we always thought about what was the best interest of the taxpayers and how do we maximize the revenue from foreclosed properties that the city, we don't want to be in the real estate business, but we are by, because that's the way it is, and they come back to the city, and then we have to dispose of them. The one thing that we didn't think about was what about those properties that we decide we weren't going to put on the open market? And that's kind of where we caught ourselves in a little bit of a catch-22. And I think what this policy does is it very clearly states that any property that we sell will be fully appraised and put through our realtor, which is only fair to those that are representing us as well. We're paying them to do the job, and it doesn't matter whether we've officially listed it or not. We'll have a process in place that provides for full transparency and gives us the knowledge so that we can make a good decision that is in the best interest of this city and its taxpayers. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Please call Resolution 439. Counselor Barlow. And Counselor Myers. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Please call Resolution 440. Counselor Myers. And Counselor Walker. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 441. Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Kaplowitz. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Please call Resolution 442. Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Kaplowitz. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 443. Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Enright. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 444. Counselor Kaplowitz. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 445. Counselor Myers. And Counselor Todd. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 446. Counselor Myers. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 447. Counselor Todd. And Second Counselor Van Buren. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to abstain, a little conflict of interest.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
No.
Please call Resolution 448. Counselor Myers. Counselor Kaplowitz. Any discussion here? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 449. Counselor Enright. Counselor Kaplowitz. Discussion? Hearing none? Please call, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Enright.
Yes, this is the, what we're talking about is the sale of real property that the city accepted a bid on. And I brought this up, I wanted it for further discussion, and I just wanted to let the public know that's what this was for.
Any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Yes.
Please call Resolution 450. We voted, we voted to.
A no vote would be to not. Because we just rescinded.
Right.
So, this is the vote to sell the property after Washington.
So, this would actually be.
Correct. Right.
Is there a motion? Counselor Kaplowitz, second. Counselor Van Buren. Any comments, discussion? This is a vote to. 420B.
Can I get a point of order question? Maybe I'm just confused. But if we've already voted to reconsider, okay? Wouldn't a vote now, couldn't we not take a vote now at all? Because voting on it would in effect violate our policy. We can't vote on something that's violating a policy.
We have to.
You almost have to vote, you have to vote to table.
No, we have to vote no to stop the sale of the transaction.
Which we just did. Which we just did.
No, we voted to reconsider 420B. Now, we have to vote no if you're in favor of following the policy. We have to vote no to the sale of property.
We don't have a choice on what policy, we already established a policy.
That's why we have to go back and stop what we did.
We can't violate a policy by voting.
Mike, we voted before the policy was in place. Technically, there was a policy. Now, there is new language in the policy. We now have to vote to abide by our policy. So, now we have to rescind what we did, and because of the way it happened, we now have to vote to reconsider. Done. Now, vote to sell the property, to stick with the policy. A no vote will not sell the property. If you vote yes, you are in favor of transferring the property. Just so everyone understands. No to rescind the property and put it back in the city so that it can be listed. Yes if you want to continue transferring the property.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I thought we were discussing. Cap and I made the motion, so now we're discussing. Call the roll.
Any other comments?
Never mind. Mike wants to say something real quick.
Through you, Your Honor, I appreciate this. Is, okay, so a no vote is that we don't violate the new policy that we just voted, correct, gentlemen?
Yes.
Right.
That's all I need to know.
That was the question I had, Mike.
And we're around again, so, yes, Counselor Kaplowitz.
Which technically isn't a policy until the mayor signs the resolution, so.
All right. Thank you.
Any other? Please call the roll.
No.
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 No. Thank you. I see no other resolutions. Is there any unfinished business?
We still have one more resolution.
One more resolution.
Which one is that? 450?
This is a board view.
450? 450.
And I'll move it, Your Honor.
Okay. Second? Counselor Enright.
I want to have our clerk read it, though.
I'm sorry.
Our clerk may want to read it for the.
Yes, that would be a good idea.
For the folks in the audience in that home.
It would be appropriate to put it in the minutes.
We already have.
I already did it. Discussion and call the roll.
Vote?
We have a discussion. Sorry to bring this up. We got 108 E6 Street. Can we add that to it?
8 E6?
108 E6.
Is that the?
The Roman is St. Paul.
St. Paul, right.
I'd just like to amend that and put that in there if we could, too. Um.
Can we add, yes, Counselor Van Buren?
We didn't approve the sale of that property, though, right?
No.
No.
Yeah, well, no, so now, since we did nothing with it, we've accepted no offers.
Right.
We have to list it. So, it doesn't need to be amended, but we don't need to add it. It's a property that we now have to abide by that policy. So, if there's any offers pending, they're ignored, and it has to be put on the market when we're ready. So, there's no need to add properties to it. All city properties are now in this policy.
Very good. clarify, the properties that you sell are in this policy. Those which, for whatever reason, the city didn't appropriate to retain, you all have. And so, just that those properties which are going to be sold must first be in the list, then must be.
Correct.
So, assuming that.
Right. E6.
Who wants to sell them, but then needs to be listed.
Okay. Any other questions, Alan? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 All right. I just believe that is the last resolution of the evening. Counselor Todd and Counselor Enright. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. Meeting is adjourned.